Governor call the meeting to order, please. If you would, please stand and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First, it is great to be in one of our elementary schools visiting again. It's been, what, a year and a half or something, so it was really nice to be back in one of the buildings. Our first order of business tonight is the swearing-in of the newly-elected board members. So I'll ask Michelle Capone to come up and each board member will read their individual pledge.
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on you as school board member for the Governor Wentworth Regional School Board, according to the best of your abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God, or under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Thank you.
What can I read that now?
Oh. Oh, I have to read what you just said?
You have to read the oath.
This is a test. This is it. Okay. "I, James Pittman, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as school board member according to the best of my abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God."
"Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on you as school board member for the Governor Wentworth Regional School Board, according to the best of your abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God, or under the pains and penalties of perjury?"
"I, Brody Duches, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as school board member according to the best of my abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God."
Welcome to the board. "Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on you as school board member for the Governor Wentworth Regional School Board, according to the best of your abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God, or under the pains and penalties of perjury?"
"I, Dana Streeter, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as school board member according to the best of my ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God."
Did you both? You read both parts, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just gonna sign it and I'll take it back.
Thank you. I actually went out of order, but it didn't affect anything. We should've done the oath before the pledge, but that's okay. Agenda review.
Yes, I have two things to add to the agenda. I'd like to add a discussion of our next meeting location. And I just want to inform the board that we'll check that with the council.
Okay. And under the chairman, I'd just like to add committee assignments for the next year. We'll just talk about that a little bit before we end. Okay. First order of business is passing of the minutes. Once again, we cannot approve the minutes from the Academic Affairs Committee meeting from December 6th because Tim Eldridge is not here, so we're gonna have to pass over that one. We will, I'd accept the motion to approve the meeting of the school board minutes for February 5th.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Oh, because Tim is not here, does he think he would like to table that until the next meeting? Or is that what you just said?
Yeah, just said we will not pass those, approve those minutes.
You probably know.
Well, I'll talk a little louder, maybe?
No, just...
Okay.
Oh, so you said we're gonna table it?
Yes. We're not gonna approve those minutes this week.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. All right. So I entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the February 15th school board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Jim Pittman.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Jim. Okay, all is in favor. Brody?
I abstained. I wasn't on the board yet.
Yep. Tim is not here. Wendy's not here. Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana? And Chair votes aye as well. The next would be the minutes of the non-public school board meeting on February 24th. Hand motion for, move from Charlene. Seconded by Stephanie. Okay, Brody?
I abstained. I wasn't on the board yet.
Okay. Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye as well. Okay, and the manifests. I don't have manifests for this evening. Okay. We will skip manifests. We'll approve the manifests at our next meeting in April.
Kathy, I would like to bring those two papers. Those two just took time.
Okay. All right. We will move on to public input. Fifteen minutes for public input. If anyone would like to speak, please step up to the mic. Please limit your comments to about five minutes so everyone will have an opportunity to speak. And when you get up to the microphone, it'll be turned on from the side. So anyone would like to speak, please step up to the microphone.
Good evening. Jessica Williams.
Jessica.
Nice to see all your faces. Congratulations to the new board members. I look forward to seeing how you can serve this board moving through the future. A couple of things. At the last board meeting, you were served with two different notices. And whereas you just heard some oaths to uphold the New Hampshire Constitution and the laws of New Hampshire, I'm just curious where things stand on that front because you actually had thirty days and you have three more days to post notice at a public meeting. Is there any discussion you're willing to provide on that?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we'll discuss it right at the end of the meeting.
Will we be able to have public comment after you discuss that?
Sure.
Please? Okay. So there were two different notices that I would like to discuss if that's possible. The other thing is that would it be possible to request that the manifests are provided on your website seventy-two hours prior to approving them? Is that something you'd be willing to do?
Is that possible? I don't even know if it's possible.
Kathy, is there...
Yeah, the total amount, we can, the cover pages for each one of them are there. The individual dollars and cents for each person that got paid, we don't...
No, of course, I mean, there's private information there that should be redacted, of course, because...
Sure.
That's...
Sure. Yeah, we can certainly put the dollar...
So by line item, for instance, you know, when you're looking at a profit statement, would you be willing to post how much money is going here just so that the taxpayers might get a better idea of where the money's going?
Sure.
Okay.
We can do that.
We can discuss that. Okay. Fantastic. And the last thing that I want to speak about today is I noticed there are some board members that are regularly absent from these meetings. In the policy manual, it doesn't necessarily discuss how many meetings one is allowed to miss, but it does state that members should be present at the board meetings. So is there anything that you're willing to discuss about that today?
We'll have discussions with those board members first before we make any other decisions. But yes, we're certainly aware of that and it's a little discouraging when they can't be here. They do have, tonight there are two personal family situations that arose, so I understand that they couldn't be here tonight. But for those people that are here, that aren't here for several meetings in a row, we, the chair will discuss that with them to find out what the situations are. And if they can't serve, obviously, we've had that happen in the past where a board member was asked to resign.
Would you consider adding that to the agenda for the next meeting?
I don't know if it necessarily needs to be an agenda item necessarily. If there's personal reasons, we're not gonna discuss personal reasons for their absences.
No, of course not, but it seems that it might hold the board back if someone's not able to regularly attend. And if they've taken an oath, I think it's really important that come hell or high water, you show up. And so when someone's missing, it holds academic affairs back, it holds the whole process of the board.
Yeah, and I certainly understand. And after discussions with the board members that haven't been here, we'll find out. And again, it has happened in the past where a board member couldn't show up and we asked that board member to resign and we replaced that board member with another person.
Okay. And just going back to the first thing I started with, would somebody willing to make a motion to add that to the agenda to discuss the notices you received at the last board meeting?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Would you be willing to make a motion that you add that to the agenda officially?
For next...
No, for the notices that you received at the last board meeting.
We don't need to make, Kathy said she would discuss that at the end of the meeting, so I don't think we'd need to have a motion for it.
Okay, so you're adding it to the agenda.
We'll add that, the same as the other.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
How you doing, Nate Williams? I just wondered if, I know you, you know, it's public comment, but I didn't know if the board had any position on HP 1646 that's going to the House this week about school boards and voting for school board members. So I didn't know if you guys wanna talk about that a little bit more?
Sure. I'll give that to Brody since he's in the Congress. I'll let him discuss it.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Williams. And that bill specifically would change the process for how we elect school board members. I actually pulled that bill off of consent because it would've eliminated at-large board positions. It was an unintended consequence of the bill. I spoke to the chairman of the Education Committee. I spoke with the ranking member from the Democratic side. I've spoke with Republican leadership. And I don't think that bill will be passing this year. It'll be something that we'll have to look at over the summer with other members. For anyone who didn't know what House Bill 1646 was, it was a bill that would've made it so then each community would've been its own school board district and they would've elected their own member within that district. So there would be no at-large voting. Part of the issue with that is it would've necessar, it would've, the Secretary of State's office had some concerns, specifically their legal counsel, Bud Fitch, where it would've been possibly unconstitutional, right? Because you wouldn't have actually had equal proportional representation. So, I mean, between eliminating at-large school board members on the school district, which would basically make it so then three members of this board would have to be removed, their positions would no longer be in statutory law, and with how our state constitution's set up, it'd need a proportional representation on municipal boards from communities. There was a lot of issues and it's gonna be something that, you know, the House is gonna look at next year with the Education Committee. So, but thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Well, just to comment on that a little bit, because I think there's a little bit of gray area. It's pretty small, RSA. Actually, there's only about five lines on it. Just to give everybody else a little bit more, small towns like New Durham and Effingham and Oscepee, right, like at the recent election, okay? You know, people, those bigger towns, Wolfboro, Tuftonboro, they pretty much won both of the new candidates. So towns like Effingham doesn't really have a voice in the district as big as this because Wolfboro and Tuftonboro usually carry most of the vote. So I know it's Brody's opinion on it, but I wish the board wouldn't all take the same opinion because I think it's, it really does a disservice to smaller communities and most of the districts in New Hampshire are made up of small towns. So I think it's really a disservice to small communities.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if not, we'll move on with the meeting. And we'll start with the superintendent, oh, with, I'm sorry. Student Representative Report, Fallon.
Hello? Okay. For the school board agenda review, I'm gonna start with sports. Spring sports registration will close tomorrow. Senior Robbie Hotchkiss and Junior Marcela Donido finished second place as ski meisters at the state championship this past week. The Legends Hockey Game for all Kingswood Hockey alumni will take place at the Pop Whalen Ice Arena at 7:00 PM. I did not write a date on that. I'm sorry. Whoops. The student athlete leadership team has been planning the upcoming Dig Pink Flag Football Game and the Brawley Ball Game this upcoming spring. Any juniors and seniors are welcome to participate. The set date has been made for prom for May 7th, the Saturday of the week school gets back after vacation. It'll take place on the Mount Washington and will be a junior and senior prom. On March 9th, there was a meeting between the Kingswood and Kennan Student Council to discuss what bystanders can do and prevent bullying and keep our schools slur-free.
Thank you, Fallon. Appreciate that. Okay, on to Superintendent's report. Kathy?
Thank you. And thank you, Andrea, for having us here tonight. It's such a pleasure to be here and so nice to be back in the buildings. And I have to say, it's just wonderful to see all the teachers in the audience. For the, let's see. I've certainly missed the tradition and I've missed seeing staff and student presentations. And we won't have any students here tonight, but I'm really looking forward to hearing the presentation from our math coaches. These coaching positions are time limited, two-year positions funded by our ESER grant. Of the many things that we've been able to do with our ESER funds to assist our students, I think our math coaches have been one of those areas about which I've gotten the most positive feedback. These teachers have become math experts and have been sharing their expertise with teachers, providing job embedded professional development, assistance in planning, providing model lessons, providing feedback for individual student instruction, and instructing students. So I'm really excited to hear all about what you've all been doing. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Just so that I can stand so people can see me. So, welcome, school board members, parents, staff, and community members. We are so thrilled to have you here all in person tonight. It's so nice to see everyone's faces. And I want you to hear a little bit more about Oscepee Central School. At OCS, we strive to use a student-centered approach where student learning and progress is at the forefront of all we do. We want students to learn in a safe and collaborative environment where students, staff, and families work together to ensure their academic success. This process begins with our Tier One core instruction. Providing solid Tier One core instruction for all students sets the foundation for learning. One area of academics that OCS has been working hard to provide the solid Tier One instruction is in mathematics. Over the past few years, we've provided professional development along with curriculum materials and resources for teachers to address our district math standards. And most recently, OCS and many other schools in the district have had access to a math coach in their buildings to provide additional professional development and support for teachers to ask questions and receive timely feedback regarding their math planning and instruction. Tonight, our district math coaches have prepared a slideshow presentation with students learning math in our district schools. They also have a few math activities to show you as an example of how students are learning math in their classrooms. I'm pleased to welcome our district Curriculum Director, Caitlin Hills, to introduce you to our math coaches, and I hope that you enjoy.
Thank you, Andrea. All of our schools in Governor Wentworth have a district math coach. Christine Zimmer is the math coach at Oscepee Central School. Kristy Diamond serves two schools, Effingham Elementary and Crescent Lake School. Julie Burr is our secondary math coach at the middle and high schools. Talia Arsenal is our coach at Carpenter Elementary School. Kim Reed is the math coach at Tuftonboro Elementary School. And although she couldn't be here tonight, Tori Richards is our math coach at New Durham School. And I'm gonna pass it on to Christine. Couldn't bring any children in tonight to do some activities with all of you, so instead we have a slideshow. And this is pictures of children from all over the district working on math in their classrooms. A lot of parents feel like they don't know what their kids are doing during the day for math, so we hope that this will help out a little bit. After the slideshow, we have a little activity to do with you, a little participation,
That's only some of the things that children are doing every day. We're constantly working with one another. We're solving problems together. We're learning new things. The activity that we have for you next is up for everybody to do with us. It's called an ESTA mystery. And it works with your ability to estimate something, but also to use clues to help narrow down those choices. I'm gonna show you a container that has little ducks in it. I'm gonna ask you to estimate about how many are in there. And then as we add more and more clues, you can go ahead and change it. Everyone see the little glass filled with ducks? How many do you think there's more than ten ducks inside of there? Oh, very good. We're in a dance class, I can tell. Do you think there's more than twenty ducks in there? More happy with that? Get an idea in your head of maybe how many ducks might be in there. Remember the shape of the glass? That one has a little impact in how many are in there. And let me give you a clue. You'll notice that there's a conjuge chart down here. This is a great activity to help kids use their conjuge chart and use what they know, solve it. Our first clue, the answer is an even number that's between thirty and the number that you find if you triple thirty. So if I triple thirty, I'm going to have ninety. And my bottom number will be thirty. So some clues between thirty and ninety, we're going to figure out how many ducks are in that glass. Does that make you want to change your guess first time? That's okay. So let's cross out all the ones that can't eat. Because my next clue has to do with what type of number I have to eat. The answer is not a multiple of four. And for those of you that might've forgotten, a multiple is a number when you multiply it by, that you get it, so four times two is eight, four times three is twelve, and so on and so on. So it's not one of those. And sometimes this gets confusing. You kind of forget, oh, I can't do that or I have to do that. It's not one of those, so I want to cross those right out. The next clue involves looking at the duck. It might be kind of hard to see, but there are three numbers on that duck. There's a two, there's a three, and there's a six. The answer doesn't have a two, a three, or a six in it. So sixty-two, not gonna work. Twenty-three, not gonna work. So let's get those. Our choices are getting narrow. Have you changed your mind a couple times? The next clue is that the answer is not a multiple of ten. So it can't be ten, or twenty, or thirty, or forty, or fifty, or any of those. And the last one is that the answer is not a multiple of three. And that's pretty tricky because most of us know three times twelve, but once you get a little bit higher, that's a harder one to figure out. So we often discuss in class how we can figure out those. But just to make it easier, because I know you want to go home tonight, we have two numbers left. We have seventy-four and fifty-eight. Who thinks it's going to be seventy-four? Who thinks it's gonna be fifty-eight? Why do you think it's going to be fifty-eight? The shape of the glass? You count somebody around your top and get a general idea. You got money in your pocket, it doesn't like you. That was great skill, too. Are you ready for the final answer? Final answer, fifty-eight. So you can kind of imagine what this would be like in the classroom. The kids get so excited when they get it right. And then all this argument goes on, how is it gonna be a fifty, a fifty? And they have a great time. So when you have a chance, ask your kids if they... So when you have a chance, ask your kids if they've done anything like this. If they've had to try to guess how many things are in there. They'll probably tell you they have. Other any questions?
Are there really tiny ducks in the bag?
Really tiny ones. Yeah, really tiny ones. So CERN is a computer program. And it lines with our Eureka app program. So kids can go on there and do lessons.
Okay. And so is CERN, is that like a, does that have any competency for Eureka?
Um, no. It is more of like a, we, when we were online, we used it a lot for kids to do lessons and things on there. And you can only go keep going and do everything right. But you have the instructions from the teacher, and that's more of a reinforcement for that.
One of the things that people have probably noticed looking at all of the photographs is that there are a lot of objects that are being used, which is really different than when I went to school and probably different than some of the other people here tonight. So can you talk about, a little bit about what's behind using manipulatives? And some of the different kinds of things that you're doing that people in the audience may not have seen in their classrooms when they were in school?
So we have a whole slew of different things that we use. We have certain manipulatives that we use for certain situations to help us to understand number sense. We have base ten blocks, we have ten frames, we have wheezing air rods. Those are just a few of the things that we use to help them to build number sets. And then as we go up higher in the grades, we incorporate other tools that help us to learn different things. For example, you might use pattern blocks to create an array to figure out a multiplication problem. Or you might use unifix cubes if you're doing graphic. We've found that the more that the kids are hands-on, the more active learners they are, the more that they learn. So anytime we can find something that's going to help them to make those connections and to understand what we're trying to teach, that's the best way to do it. Most of our kids don't do well in just paper pencil. Some of you maybe not either. But the more that you have your hands on something, you can play with something, the easier it is to make those connections.
The other piece of that is the fact that when children have the opportunity to do something with their hands, they really internalize the learning, and they're not remembering just the sequence or just how to do things. And right now, in this world, we're asking children to apply things more. And so by doing this at earlier levels, students are able to apply things when they get older. If I'm correct.
So I'm a mom of elementary school kids and have been completely baffled by what they've brought home in the past two years. Especially when they were fully remote and asking me for help. Just wanted to extend an idea that it might, because math is taught so differently now than it was when we were kids, it might be wonderful to offer parents some kind of help nights if they want to learn about what, how to help their children with math. Even if it's just strategies, because there, I knew how to do multiplication and division, but I could not do the picture.
What's going on this year here at our school, we had a Title I Math Night. We taught parents a bunch of math days. I know FA Pan also had a Math Night as well. But I don't see any reason why we couldn't do something like that. That would be extremely good.
I think that would be really well received. I think that would be, or even just to record something and, you know, ways to help. This is what we're doing. That would be wonderful.
For parents who want to ask a question?
I was about to ask a question. My apologies. If you want to, if she, if you wanted to, okay. I was just, I remember when I was in school, actually, in Governor One North Regional School District, when we learned a new kind of like thing, like, I've never seen bonds. I saw all the rest of that, actually, in school, I remember, in Carpenter Crescent Lake. But I never saw bonds. But I remember that the math teachers or the elementary school teachers would send home an information packet or a sheet on what was learned on that day. And we'd bring it to our parents. Sometimes even some teachers, like I believe Mrs. Edmonds, had us give it to our parents and make them sign it, to make sure that they actually read it, that we gave it to them, that we didn't just stuff it in our backpacks. So I would suggest that might be a good way of making sure parents are understanding how this works. Awesome.
Sometimes it's pretty gay. And we found some parents were interested in it, but each day, classroom teacher gets easy.
Okay, you can ask your question if you'd like.
I wonder, in the curriculum, and I'm not exactly sure where it looks, you might already be there, but is there life skills taught within the math program? Like, as far as, you know, high schoolers learning how to do taxes? Because they'll have to do it when they're, you know, budgeting. But I was just curious if it's shown at all in elementary at all, at any age?
In elementary, it's basically the math, money stuff that we do. Those are the two big things that are there. But also, like, we do a lot of problem solving and word problems, and those are tied into real life. And figuring out things along that way, too.
And I can also speak to middle school. They do have lessons on percentages, and taxes, and tips, and commissions, and those real life skills. They do have that embedded in that.
And I can speak to the high school. In addition to having it embedded in the math, we also have economics class and personal finance. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Excellent. Thank you so much.
Okay, so next, next under my report, we have election results. I'd like to start out by congratulating our newest board members, or board member, Brody Duches, and our returning board members, Jim Pittman and Dana Streeter. The election results were Brody Duches, 1,919 votes. Jessica Williams, 1,310. Jim Pittman, 1,270. Nate Williams, 1,140. And Dana Streeter was unopposed. Randy Walker was voted in again as the moderator, and he was unopposed as well. Moving on to the warrant articles. The Governor Wentworth Support Staff Association changes in the collective bargaining agreement were voted in, but the yes votes were 2,286. No votes were 976. A special meeting, if that had not passed, the vote was positive on that, 2,379, and 890 no votes. The Governor Wentworth Administrative Team changes in the collective bargaining agreement also passed. The yes votes were 2,221. The no votes were 1,065. And special meetings, should that article have failed, the vote was 2,275 yes and 961 no. The Turfield Capital Reserve, the yes votes were 2,113. The no votes were 1,152. Our capital improvements article, that was the most popular warrant article, and that was 2,461 yeses and 829 no's. And our operating budget was 2,153 yeses and 1,114 no's. So it was really a great night for the school district, and I want to thank everyone who came out to vote. Next, we have the Wood Estate. We have a request from our elementary schools to bring Camp Invention to our schools for one week this summer. The program complements our curriculum by delving into science, technology, engineering, and math. The request from the Wood Estate is a total of $10,200. The families are only asked to pay $50 a student, but this is a very expensive program. And the $10,200 being requested also does not nearly cover the cost of the program and would be supplemented by money raised from parents and the balance in our student activity accounts. Scholarships are available should a family not be able to afford the $50. This is something that, that the board has passed every year to support the STEM program in the summertime. And so I'm looking for a motion to support it this year as well. Okay, great. Thank you. COVID update. I am hoping that this is my last COVID update this year. We've certainly talked a lot about COVID this year, and I will be very happy not to talk about it whenever I don't have to. Since vacation, we have only had five cases and no more than two in a day, which is really a very dramatic difference from our highest day, which was 46 cases. And we had over 100 cases for several months running. So it's good to see such a limited number of cases. A message went out to parents to let them know that calling the COVID hotline was no longer necessary, and to call a school nurse, as they would with any illness, would be important. The placement of furniture is gradually going back to typical spacing, although there is still a little extra spacing in some schools. And all is looking very positive at the moment, and spring should really assist in lowering the number of cases. So I'm just delighted, and I think it's probably lifted everybody's spirits a little bit to have no masks and the combination of springtime. So, next item?
I was just curious, do we still have any kind of like response committee that still exists for COVID? Or have we disbanded that?
Well, you know, we, we had a pretty broad-based committee when we needed it. Right now, we're not in a position where we need it. The people that are the go-to people for me at the moment are our school nurses. And our school nurses are very connected to the hospital. So I feel very confident that the information that I get from them and the work that I do with them will provide us with great advice.
I only ask because if we still had one, I would make a motion to disband it. But if we don't have one, then, then we're good.
And I, I believe I was also going to talk about location of the next board meeting. Typically, we've had our April board meeting in New Durham. So I'd like to have the board consider having our April meeting in New Durham again this year, since it looks like we're going to be able to go back to our rotation and be in schools. So for your consideration.
I'll make the motion. We have our next meeting at New Durham Elementary School.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to look forward to being there. Next, I have a field trip, just to inform you, because I always inform you when we have a field trip going out of state. So we have a field trip from New Durham School. They're not going too far. They're going on an overnight trip to the Ecology Center School in Sacomaen. And the point of the trip is to reinforce lessons in ecology that students in fifth grade are studying rivers, farms, fields, forests, and habitats. The students are going to learn about sustainability through growing food, conserving energy, and building community by nourishing the ecosystems in which we live. So it's a, it's a field trip that the kids really enjoy, so. Yes. It's for fifth graders. So I'm also excited about getting back to our typical field trips, and I know the kids are, too. And with that, oh, the next item, I believe, is your School Boards Association.
Okay, a couple of things, and this is actually for Fallon. The, there's a scholarship program available this year. I think I mentioned earlier on that the School Board Association was creating a new scholarship for student representatives for the school board. And the, they've put together the program, exactly how it's going to work. Unfortunately, it's late in the, late in the process. And this Friday is the deadline to get your application in. However, if you'd like to do that, there's instructions to get on. It's an online application, so if you'd like to do that, you can certainly do that. There's going to be five $2,000 scholarships awarded. One for the North Country, one for the Lakes Region, which we're part of. One for the Southeast, one for South Central, and one for the Southwest section of New Hampshire. So if you'd like to do that, that would be great. And I'll do, you can, actually, you can have that sheet if you'd like to, it has some details on it. And also, the School Board Association has a ton of seminars that board members can participate in. And I'll share this with the board members. There's a Right to Know Seminar, there's new board member seminars, how to have an effective school board meeting. There's all kinds of online seminars that they have. So if you'd like to take that, that would be great. Yes. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. That's, that's great. And the, the formation, I mentioned in the last meeting, the formation of a new National School Board Association. Again, I'm not sure exactly what the name of it is yet. They, I think they really haven't decided that. They're doing that this month, I believe. Is still in process, and the New Hampshire School Board Association will be a part of that as one of the founding members. And I think that's going to be an exciting time to get the, the information that we need, that we were relying on the original National School Board Association to provide. They've had many problems, and to the best of my knowledge, I think 25 or 26 state associations have withdrawn from that association and is joining the new association. So more to come on that and what information that we can be afforded from that association. Okay, under Chairman's report, I have no detail on this. I do have a sad, sad note. Sympathy, especially the sympathy we sent to Beth Muldrick on the passing of her daughter, who is a 2021 graduate. I have no information on that, but it's just very, very sad. I don't know what the situation is, but just a very sad, sad circumstance. At our meeting in April, I'd like you to think between now and on our April meeting, who you would like as chairman and vice chairman for next year. That's where we, we select our chairman and vice chairman for the next school year, or for the next 12 months, actually. And at the same time, if you can, between now and then, if you can send me a list of the committees that you'd like to serve on, I'll put that together. Again, I'd like to limit the number of members on each committee to four, maximum of four members. Not that any votes are ever taken at these meetings that are binding votes. Everything comes before the full board anyway. And any board member can sit in on a meeting, but I'd like to limit the actual members of the committees to, you know, four members of the school board. So please send me the committees that you'd like to serve on. We can get those assignments done next, next school board meeting. And again, think of who you'd like to have for chair and vice chair for the next, next 12 months. And that's all I have. Committee reports, academic affairs?
Okay, we, we had our meeting at 6 o'clock, and we had some members of the community join us, and I want to thank them for their interest. One of the things, two things we discussed were board policies, BEA, related to board meetings, as well as board policy, BEDH, related to public participation at board meetings. And one of the things that we talked about was House Bill 1195, and the fact that it could alter, it could result in, depending on whether the Senate approves it, result in our, changing our policy. So we decided that we would wait until that takes place before we made any, any changes. Another thing we talked about was the need to have clarification regarding people wishing to provide public input, to be able to provide that by email. And we did need some clarification. I was not at the last meeting, but Stephanie pointed out that her understanding was that Mr. Chair, that you had, I, I think I should let Stephanie address that, because I wasn't at the February 15th meeting.
In terms of the policy, we wanted to explore whether or not it's permitted within current policy to read emails as public input or not. And so that was something we wanted to explore, because it came up at the last meeting. And so that was something we wanted to explore, because it came up at the last meeting.
And additionally, Stephanie was under the impression that you had, at the last meeting, had not wanted to read emails as part of public input. And I had questioned that, because I watched the meeting on video at the time, and I did not understand that that was what you were saying. So perhaps it was related to a specific email that you didn't feel was appropriate to read, but I wasn't at the meeting.
We will be glad to read any emails that people want, public input, as long as they're not, you know, as long as there's no personal information within that. You know, we have to be very careful of how we proceed with that. But if somebody would like to send emails to us to be read in non-public, we're happy to do that. We just have to make sure that, you know, they're redacted if they need to be redacted or whatever, prior to reading them in public.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. We also, did I pretty much cover BEDH? Or did you want to add something? Okay. And we had a brief discussion about student health and wellness, because I had some concerns regarding projected approximate percentages of our students who might be suffering lingering aspects of COVID-19 infections, also known as long haulers. And Heather gathered information and was able to share with us that, having checked with all the school nurses, we have not had any reported cases of any of our students suffering from long-haul COVID symptoms. But if that came to pass, we have in place an excellent support system to include tutors for students, as well as a modified school day. And very much Katie shared with us that, you know, for example, when we have students who've experienced concussions and they are not, it's not in their best health interest to have much screen time, we have accommodations for them. And I think.
Who would initiate having, making the decision of this kind of hybrid school day for the child? Because I know, I remember I had concussions in high school, and typically it was my parent who would say, you know, my son was diagnosed with a concussion by his doctor, and, you know, we need to do these things to mitigate the effects of the concussion for the next, you know, anywhere. I had, one time it was a week, one time it was like three weeks. So I hope it's not the, it wouldn't be the school district being like, you know, we think this child has long-haul COVID, and we're going to make it so then they have to have these abbreviated days. I would assume that we're going to make it so then a parent goes to the school and says, you know, they were diagnosed with long-haul COVID issues, and we have, you know, the school board has a policy for helping the parents, you know, mitigate that kind of issue so they can have the proper learning environment to deal with it?
Okay. Kathy can probably answer that if you'd like.
My understanding was that we have, that that would be treated very similarly to other situations that we have regarding students with long-term, you know, with extenuating health conditions. But Jack, you said someone could address that?
That would be handled through the Section 504 process, and we would have a team that would meet with the parent to take a look at all information. So the team would look at the information that the parent brings forward, how the student was doing in school prior to whatever the health issue is, how the student is currently doing academically, and then come up with whatever accommodations seem appropriate. Some of those accommodations might come from a parent observing their child. Some of the accommodations might come from what the physician is recommending. Some of them might come from what folks at school are seeing, or some combination of all of that.
I asked for clarification, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, who's initiating the process? I assume it's the parent would go to the school.
It could be the parent, or it could be the school. If the school sees something that worries them, they could in fact contact the parent and.
And then ask the parent? Okay. No, I just want that clarification. I just want to make sure, you know, people's parents are involved.
So one quick thing I forgot to mention, in terms of the two policies, we decided that we would continue our discussion of how to potentially adjust those policies or consider adjusting them once we hear from Concord regarding HB 1195.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, building and maintenance. Anything from building and maintenance? Nothing at this point? Okay. All right, well, certainly now that we have our maintenance warrant article approved, we can move forward with some of those projects. Okay, under finance, again, thank you to the voters again for approving all the warrant articles. And under human resources, thank you for approving the support contracts and the administrative contracts as well. These people have worked extremely hard over the last couple of years, just continuing of what they've always done. And I think it shows a great deal that the support was that good for both of those sets of contracts. So thank you for that. Okay, moving on to advanced planning. First item under there is the April meeting, which we know is now going to be in New Durham. And the next item is public input. So anyone who'd like to speak, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
So Jessica, as I understand it, the petition warrant article was to make the mask mandate optional, correct? Okay, so as you know, the mask mandate is optional. Okay, so. So back in September, I contacted Barbara Lumen, because petition warrant articles such as this one were happening all over the state. And so I'm going to just redo some of her advice. So first, since Governor Wentworth is a cooperative school district, a citizen's petition for a special school district meeting is not valid unless signed by 5% of the voters, and that's RSA 195:13. In my opinion, even if you receive a petition with the required number of signatures, the school board is not required to call the special meeting, because RSA 18915 gives the school board authority to adopt regulations binding on staff and students. Based on RSA 18915, state law vests the authority to adopt the mask requirement in the school board, by the school board. The voters at a district meeting do not have the authority to overrule the school board in decisions in this area. RSA 197:9 gives the Superior Court the authority to order the board to call a special meeting if the school board unreasonably neglects or refuses to call a special meeting after the sufficient application therefore is made. There are no New Hampshire Supreme Court cases interpreting this language in the context of a school board's refusal to call a special meeting. However, there is an identical requirement for town meetings, and there are cases interpreting the meaning of that language. And I don't know that it's relevant to go into the town meeting portion of her opinion. There have been several cases that have found that the school board in fact does have the authority to require masks. And so I really think that this issue has been put to rest. So. And on the other notice, the notice of maladministration, malice, and malfeasance by SAU 49 school board officials and New Hampshire government servants, persons, or entities. So this was the long article, or document, I should say, that was read at our last school board meeting. So I also consulted about this with our attorney. So this has some overlap with the fact that several courts have found that in fact school boards do have the authority to implement mask mandates. Some of the statements in here, improperly exercising authority and not granted to your office, you have violated that oath. There's no, there's no evidence of that. Now, this is fairly long. It goes into parental rights, face coverings optional, terminate, that this is an unconstitutional mandate. Again, the courts have found that this is not the case. So I have been advised that the district, that the school board doesn't need to do anything with this, because it has no force of law. It's an attorney's opinion, and there are several court cases that support that opinion.
Okay, we'll move on to public input now.
Is that, I'll stand further. Can you turn the microphone down here? Yeah. I think that should be okay. All right, so I don't really want to argue the case here, but that is your attorney's opinion. Obviously, your attorney is working on behalf of the school district and not on behalf of the public. So I would respectfully disagree that it's an opinion, and only that, of one single attorney. Now, we had over 5% of the population sign a petition. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of people who disagree with one single attorney. So I'm going to ask you again to follow the law and allow the special meeting, or we should discuss this again as a policy matter. So it is a fact, straight from you in an email, that the mask mandate was never a policy. It was never codified properly in your policy manual. It is not a policy. It is a decision. Now, you do not have the authority to make decisions that are not codified in policy. You work for the school board as a superintendent. So we have a reciprocal relationship. The school board makes policies that you therefore enforce. You do not get carp lash decision to make policies. Now, I'm not going to argue anymore, because I know everyone loves that, but I do want to make some requests, because I think we could work around this in a different way. So please hear me out, okay? So I'm going to request to review the policy adoption process, the policy development system, and also the policy revision process specifically. So we had a situation where the pandemic policy, which is Policy EBCF, is found on page 171. That policy was outdated, unfortunately. And I was the one that brought it to the attention of this board, that the school was following an outdated, what wasn't following in a policy at all. There was a 2009 policy, it was never updated properly. So the school board took it under consideration and had a meeting, and the policy was changed. But there was no public input for that policy change. So according to your policy adoption process, it has to go in a certain order. The policy must be presented to the public and published. There must be a public comment section, or provided a period for public comment. Then the board must discuss. Then, two weeks after we place on the agenda, then the board can vote on it. So this was not observed for this revision of EBCF. Now, I hear you speaking about revising all these different policies, and I respect that, that it's at least coming up so that the public can hear you discuss it. But this was not the case with EBCF. Now, there is a provision that, under an emergency procedure, you can waive the two-week period. But the superintendent must inform the public and give, which has a containing commission reading, of calling to the board's attention all policies that are out of date or need revision. So this would be the duty of the superintendent. And you're still supposed to follow an emergency procedure that the public must be informed, and that didn't happen either, unfortunately. So I would like to try to meet in the middle and to go over some of these adoption policy, these policies in the book. So let me just see here. Specifically, this is from the notes from the academic affairs meeting. Forgive me for not being super neat with my notes. But I would like the board to maybe follow the same guidelines or procedures to revising a policy as to adopting a policy, that you allow a period of time for public comment. Is that something that seems reasonable? That we could introduce the topic, allow public comment, take two weeks, and then vote on it? Is that something that seems like we could do that and then maybe revise our pandemic policy? And take another look at it?
All right, I think we can certainly put this on the agenda to discuss. You know, it's not, we don't have an answer for you tonight exactly how we want to do that, but.
It just hasn't been updated since 2009, since January 2009. I think it just takes, I think deserves another second look. So again, the school board powers and duties, for anyone who wants to reference, it is Policy BBA-R, and it's on page 72, 73, goes over the powers and duties of the school board. The school board does not have any power except to create policy. And the school board has to create policy in a certain procedure. And I'm just going to ask that the school board follow it up and that the new superintendent, as soon as, I know I'm up, I'll sit down in a moment, that the new superintendent, when it comes time, is working with the board and understanding those policies, and that the board is holding the new superintendent responsible to understand those policies. So that's my request today. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else like to speak, if not public? State your name and.
Ed Fregato, Center of Spinahanford. I'm just wondering if the attorney's opinion would be published, or how, or where, and get a copy of it?
Well, understand that if we have her writing opinion, it will cost some money. So if that's the request, the board can decide whether they want to do that. But it will be, it will be financial. Oh, I thought you meant on the first one. Sure, we can, yeah, oh, absolutely, sure.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. Any closing, any closing comments by board members? Stephanie.
I want to celebrate something tonight. Last Friday night, I had the opportunity to go to Concord, to the State House, to watch the state finals in the Poetry Out Loud competition. Can I hear a little, I don't know. I think I was like one of the only people from this district there. Gordon Lang was also there, he's a teacher at the high school. We were supporting the Kingswood representative, Emily Matos. Am I thinking, yeah? And just to kind of give context, Poetry Out Loud is a nationwide poetry recitation competition, where students have to memorize three poems by heart and recite them to a panel of judges. And they are judged on the accuracy of their recitation, as well as their performance. And Kingswood has been involved in Poetry Out Loud for more than a decade, and the program has been, oh. The program's been going strong in New Hampshire for close to 20 years. And Emily Matos, who's a sophomore at Kingswood, is our, out of the 10,000 students that started this competition all the way across the state of New Hampshire, she is our state champion. So we have a representative from New Hampshire, right here in our district, going to compete at the national competition for this. And it's so exciting, it's a first for us. And I'm just so proud of her, got to see her performance, just absolutely outstanding and thrilling to watch. So just wanted to celebrate her, her teacher, Erin Gauthier, and Poetry Out Loud coordinators, the entire English department at the high school. Awesome job.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. Okay, anyone else? Yeah, Brody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for permitting me to speak. I just want to thank the public for coming out tonight. And I just want to let people know that I'd like to be a resource. I meant it seriously when I said I wanted to bring unity to this district, that it's time to kind of, you know, start moving forward. And I agree that, you know, we should be updating our policy and ensuring that we're following our policy to a T. But I really want folks to know that I'm willing to work with anyone. My phone number is always public. My email is public. I have reached out to folks who have had grievances, and I really sincerely want to extend this olive branch. I think there's a lot that we can get done. I think there's a lot that the public and even the board agrees on, you know, agrees on. And so if we can find a way to kind of collaborate and build bridges, I think there's a lot that we can do in this district with improving competency, supporting our teachers, supporting parents and children, and getting them involved positively, and making sure that a policy reflects our community's values. So, and I also just want to thank everyone for, you know, giving me this, for trusting in me to be able to govern in this district. Because, you know, I know some people, you know, I'm young, and, you know, maybe I'm tested in Concord, but only for the last year and a half. So I want to really prove myself to the community, so. And thank you. So, and thank you for the folks who come here and keep us to account. That's important. Thank you to the folks who come here and support the policies that are good. That's also important, too. So thank you for letting me speak, Mr. Chairman.
On a lighter note, I saw a bunch of math people here tonight and I just have to observe, no one mentioned that today is Pi Day. So I wanted to correct that omission. Thank you. Okay, if that's, that's the last, oh, Charlene.
Oh, you knew I'd have to say something. I just wanted to say that it is a real treat after two years of not, two years-ish, of not being able to get to all the schools in the district for our meetings. Being here tonight is incredibly moving to me and very important because, you know, we care about everything that goes on in the district. We really enjoy finding out specific things that our students are learning. And it's just, it's just really great to be able to be back visiting, having our meetings in the various elementary schools and I look forward to getting to visit New Durham School for a meeting next month.
Thank you, Charlene. Okay, if there's no other comments by the board member, oh, yes, Kelly, go for it.
Just real quick, I apologize for being late. And in typical B style, we have to mention the high school competition drama show this weekend, Friday night and Saturday night at 7:00. Tickets are at the door by box.
Thank you. Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, could you also clarify why Wolfboro Community Television wasn't broadcasting this?
Why they weren't broadcasting it? Do you know more about it than I do?
So I heard some parents were concerned that Wolfboro Community Television and some of the local community television are no longer broadcasting our school board meeting. That has to do with the fact that that's how it worked prior to COVID. And the reason for that is because of the resources it takes to set up to livestream. So the video will be posted publicly after. It just won't be livestreamed. Things in the high schools, specifically the art center, that can be livestreamed. For them to be able to livestream stuff here, they would have to take hours before a meeting to set it up and hours to take it down. So logistically, it just, we don't have the, you know, I shouldn't say we, they don't have the resources at Wolfboro Community Television. It was something that I was concerned about, too, because I know a lot of people, they didn't really start watching the school board meetings until COVID. So, you know, people either went in person or they watched the videos after. So it's good to know that, it's not like Wolfboro Community Television is trying to shut off the light. It just has to do with their resources and maybe it's something, you know, we'll need to explore as a community with them.
I'm sorry for asking that because I got a text from...
Yeah, it's basically back to where we were before COVID, where the board meetings are taped and then put up on the site.
So are you saying that we're not being livestreamed now?
Correct.
Correct.
Because I had a conversation with Timothy Goodwin this morning and he told me that that was going to be taking place.
He changed his mind as soon as I came in when I talked to him, so. And they don't have the resources or the manpower to do it. It's just too much.
Interesting. Okay.
Okay. Okay, if we're...
I just, okay, so when did you talk to him?
4:50 P.M.
Okay, good to know. We have a meeting Wednesday morning. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Yeah, most likely because it's just the equipment to set up, the resources that are not available. But again, all the meetings are taped and then put up the following day. But again, anybody that wants to have public input or anything, we could certainly read their public input in, if they want to email to either myself or the superintendent, okay? Okay, moving on, I would entertain a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A:3, Paragraph 2, for personnel in legal matters. And we'll take that vote first. Brody, oh, I'm sorry. Moved by Dr. Jim, by Jim Pittman, another. Brody's second. All right, all those in favor? Brody.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Dr. Jim.
Aye.
Jim Pittman.
Aye.
Charlene.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.